Good evening, and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for December 10, 2024 at 7:00 PM here in the North Bend City Hall. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in saying the Loyal Allegiance.
Loyal allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, welcome. Welcome to our first city council meeting with our newly seated council. I'd like to thank everybody who is here in person tonight, for those who are online, watching live, or if they're watching now later date, so welcome everybody. After calling the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our city recorder to help us with our roll call. Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Engleke.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Counselor Forrest.
Here.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next on the agenda for item number three, we have some ceremonial items. The first ceremonial item is we have a proclamation for the last clipper, the 100th and 50th anniversary. So I'm going to ask Mr. Wagner and guests to join me up front here for a proclamation. All right, so I think we'll stand in the corner, guys, and we'll face this way, and we'll read the proclamation and then do some introductions. How's that sound?
Very good.
Okay. "City of North Bend, Oregon proclamation. Whereas the Western Shore, also known as the Oregon Clipper, launched on October 10, 1874 in North Bend, Oregon, stands as a symbol of our city's rich maritime history and innovation. And whereas the Western Shore was not only a true clipper ship built in Oregon, but also the last clipper ship built in the entire United States, constructed at the Simpson Shipyard under the craftsmanship of master shipbuilder John Cruz and commissioned by Captains Asa Mead Simpson and Robert W. Simpson. And whereas the ship was celebrated for its exceptional speed and craftsmanship, setting records for voyages, including an impressive 101-day journal from Astoria to Liverpool in 1876 exemplifying the ingenuity and determination of our forbearers. And whereas the Western Shore made from local Douglas fir and Port Orford cedar highlighted the natural resources of our region while in its interior design adorned with myrtle wood and mahogany showcased the artistry and the time. And whereas the ship's tragic loss in 1878 near Duxbury Reef reminds us of the dangers faced by those who dedicate their lives to maritime exploration and trade. And whereas the 100th anniversary of, I'm sorry, the 100th and 50th anniversary of the Western Shore provides an example for the city of North Bend to honor its historical significance, celebrate the contributions of shipbuilders, sailors, and maritime workers, and inspire future generations to appreciate the rich heritage of our coastal community. Now therefore, I, Jessica Engleke, Mayor of the City of North Bend, do hereby proclaim December 10, 2024 as Western Shore's 150th anniversary day in the city of North Bend, and I encourage all residents and visitors to commemorate this historic milestone by reflecting on the legacy of the Western Shore and the vital role maritime history continues to play in shaping our community. In witness whereof, I hereand do set my hand and cause the seal of the city of North Bend to be affixed this 10th day of December, 2024." All right. So I invited Mr. Wagner and a guest from the museum tonight to talk for a moment about the history of the Western Shore, and Mr. Wagner has also wrote a book about this, so we have a picture of the book here, and we're on our celebratory cake tonight, and I thought you could just take a moment and talk about what inspired you to write about this ship and the history here in North Bend.
Thank you, Mayor Jessica Engleke. I'm honored to have the Executive Director of the Coos History Museum, Heather Christianberry, with us tonight. The museum is the publisher of the book. As many of you probably know, Judy and I over the years have done a number of biographies and shorter picture books on the history of North Bend. Some of them have been very significant, the history of Louis Simpson, LJ, the uncommon life of Louis Jerome Simpson, I think stands as a major piece of North Bend history. But along the way, we've turned up interesting people who have lived here, like LD Kinney and Marion Sale Taylor, who became Radio's Voice of Experience. And of course, we have seen through the Cruz and Banks Shipyard and Simpson's North Bend Shipyard, many fine ships of sail that have come from our communities, docks. And the keystone of all of that maritime history is the Western Shore. And so it has been with a great deal of pleasure that I, with the help of Steve Friskia, model shipbuilder, who made the model which sits in North Bend's visitor center for all to see, that with Steve, we have told the full, the most complete story yet told of the Western Shore. Thank you for letting me tell you that.
Wonderful. Well, you are such a treasure to have here in North Bend. I always love hearing about the history and to be able to go on some of the special historical walks. I always like to remind people to go to the museum and to see all of the other wonderful things that we have here in our entire county. And we now have the replica of that boat over at our newly located visitor center that people can see. And was there anything specific that you wanted to say about the museum?
Yes, obviously, visit the Coos History Museum. It used to be in North Bend. We represent all Coos County, but here tonight, we would like to say in appreciation of the city of North Bend recognizing the Western Shore, in this publication, we'd like to gift you with a copy of the book.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we do want us to pause for a still photo here, Mr. City Administrator. And I will go ahead and let you hold the proclamation.
Thank you.
And I can hold this.
So do you want to bring your council down?
Yeah, let's have the council come down and maybe Counselor Hamilton can fold the cake. How about that? Huh? So Counselor Hamilton, it's very heavy. If you want to grab the cake, we can get that in the photo as well. Yes, and then we will, I hope everybody stays and enjoys some of the cake. So, yeah, so. Use both hands. Yeah, we'll get, right in here. Here, come in. Will you be able to get us all the...
Just be careful. Y'all range around him. Yes, yes. All right, here we go, ready? I want to go high so I can actually see the top of the cake. Do not lower it. Wow. Excellent.
All right, thank you. I will ask for some assistance in cutting the cake, and then please stay for the rest of the council and enjoy some cake, so.
You did it.
Yes, yes, and I can also point out to the museum if you'd like. Yes, so if you'd like to take that, that's perfect. Yeah, thank you so much for being here. Oh, absolutely, yes, yes, thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead and... Would you like a picture? We're ready. Okay, all right, we're going to jump back here in the agenda. We do have a, the city recorder, if you can remind me, are we moving our item B ceremonial item?
No, he's here.
He's here, okay.
David, show how.
Okay, so we'll be doing another ceremonial item, and this is a 10 years of service for James Ingram, our IT specialist and network admin. And David is out in the hall right now, so pause for just a moment to see here. Should we take a short recess? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take a couple minute recess and do the cake, and then we'll go ahead and jump into that. Yep. Okay, the city recorder, I will go ahead and jump back in the agenda if we're ready.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're coming back from our recess, and the next item of business is ceremonial item B, which is our 10 years of service. This is James Ingram's IT specialist and network admin, so.
So James, if you'll come on up. So, so this would be an understatement if I told you that just about all of us has James' telephone number on speed dial. The reason behind that is there's nothing that doesn't move electronic or otherwise in the city without James and his team. And you think about this, for instance, we'll have folks that'll ask, it's like, why do our patrol cars, you know, sit out there idling when there's nobody in them? It's because it takes how long to generate all that equipment?
Yep, power back on, yes.
About 15 minutes, give or take. So if you called 911, and they had to power everything up, it'd take about 15 minutes before that car could even like go on a call. All the electronics, the cameras, the systems, radios, everything, James does. All of the electronics in here, this room, everything is James. And so, you know, we just can't survive without IT. And so, James, it's an honor to award you with your 10 years. That's more than twice my tenure here, which is like a decade. And so, the entire staff, as you know, is very, very blessed to have you here. They tell you that on a regular basis, and I know that. And so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. And there are those calls because when they call them, it's always stress. I always tell folks, the IT folks, they call them when they're stressed out, but they don't actually always call them just to say, hey, I just wanted to call to let you know my computer's working today, and thank you for that, too. So with that, congratulations. And would love to do a photo here with the council.
Yep, let's do it. We got a little problem on our face.
In the middle of eating cake, but, so, you have...
Do you want to, do you want to get in a photo? Take the photo?
Yeah, my little twin's 10 years.
Yes.
Congratulations. Yeah, that is, that is... Okay, all right, we'll go by...
Yes, even your email, it's all about James.
Oh, really?
Yes, oh, really, yes. All right, ready, smile, here we go, we're going to take some of these as I was due. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Wonderful, congratulations.
Thank you, James.
Okay, that takes care of our ceremonial items for this evening. Next on the agenda is our consent calendar. Do I have a motion in the council?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second, okay. I heard a first from Counselor Hamilton, and a second from Counselor Jones. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to number five on the agenda, which is public comment. I believe I have several public comments here in person, four, and then no one online?
Right.
Okay. All right. Before we begin our public comment, I want to take a moment and say thank you to participating in the public comment this evening. The public comment period is in central part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't a time for us to have dialogue with you, but more of a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking any notes of action needed. The first person on our list is Mr. Ken Fokker. And Ken, you want to come over and come up to the mic and the chair and state the city that you live in?
Good evening. Good evening, Ken Fokker, Coos Bay. I want to say thank you to everybody here. I also want to say thank you to the police department, the hospitals, the nurses, the paramedics, the fire department, and I want to thank all of you for all you do for the city. And welcome new councilors, and welcome back to Mr. Slater. And wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and be safe and be happy. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Second on our agenda for public comment is Ron Metzger. Ron, if you want to come forward, there's a chair and the mic, and when you begin, our city recorder will start the timer for our three minutes.
Thank you for having me.
And you can state the city that you live in.
My name is Dr. Ron Metzger. I live in North Bend and have for about a quarter century, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about a dangerous traffic intersection in the Hillcrest region. My wife and I have lived at the corner of Oregon Liberty for basically 25 years about tomorrow, and over that time, we've seen a number of accidents, heard of a number of accidents, and have seen numerous, numerous near misses. The volume of traffic going through, especially during school season with Hillcrest and parents with pickup and drop off, just makes this problem that much greater. This goes back to last summer, so I'm a little bit delinquent, that there was a young child, probably somewhere between six and eight, on an electric minibike that basically was blasting through the stop signs. So Oregon has a two-way stop on Oregon going east-west. Liberty does not have a stop sign. He was going through the stop signs. I don't know how he didn't get hit at some point. I know, I made several calls to North Bend PD. I know several neighbors did as well. Haven't seen that happen in quite a while. Last night kind of brought this back to a head again. My wife and I were sitting in the living room and could just see the lights going by, especially through the stop sign part of the intersection. So I'm asking that you consider putting a four-way stop at that. I don't think it will completely help things, but it certainly wouldn't hurt. I know I've got over 80 signatures from neighbors, from parents that Hillcrest probably could have done five times that by canvassing, but at least it's quite a range, both North Bend residents as well as folks in Coos Bay that are either at the foster care facility with folks that they're visiting there, a variety of different folks in education and residents. And I'll tell you that both my wife and I, as well as most of the people that we know that live in the neighborhood, it's a de facto four-way stop anyway, that we don't trust the fact if we see anything out of peripheral vision coming down Oregon, that those individuals are going to stop. It just is something that I think, again, with the elementary school in the neighborhood, is just a tragedy waiting to happen. So hopefully, you will consider this. I don't know what the next steps are for this. I'll leave the petition with signatures and wait to hear from you all what the next steps are, and if this is something that the traffic committee deals with or that goes before the council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. And Mr. Pat Elliott, if you want to go ahead and come forward and speak as well? And if you can state the city that you live in.
Patrick Elliott, I live about a block from Ron in North Bend, on the other end of Liberty, down by Liberty and Maryland. And I like to just bolster what he's saying, we need something to be done. I refer to every morning about, you know, school drop off time as the Mom and Dad 500. As every morning, as I'm getting ready for work, I can hear a lot of cars hit third or fourth gear when they're halfway up Liberty. So that means they're doing 40 miles an hour, at least. And Liberty, for the most part, is a one-lane road due to on-street parking. I always have to wait in both ways and be very cautious, even getting into my own vehicles, because people are blowing by at 30 miles an hour. So I'd like to see a stop sign, I'd really like to see maybe a speed bump, or even you have the speed limit reader boards that are around town. I'd like to see one parked in front of Liberty for a while, just to remind people that it's not the Mom and Dad 500. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Next up, we have Chris Castleman. Chris, if you want to go ahead and fill in one word, take a seat, and tell us what city you live in.
I do not live in a city.
Okay, you do not live in the city of North Bend.
I live in Coos County, Oregon. My name is Chris Castleman.
All right, when you're ready, we'll go ahead and begin the panel.
So I came here tonight to continue my comments from last night. I didn't think I'd have to come back, I thought I was pretty clear. It's pretty simple stuff to me, the word discrimination and what it means. I read a definition yesterday, I said, or I read from the Cambridge Dictionary, "to treat a person or group of people differently because of their race, gender, sexuality, et cetera." That's to discriminate. It's pretty simple to me. After my public comment, you guys had a conversation about the sewer rates, and you guys are in a pickle with the sewer system in your city, and you don't understand why people don't want to vote for it and give you guys more money, and they don't understand, they don't understand, they don't understand. But if you guys can't understand discrimination, something that simple, why should the public trust you with their sewer system? Why should they trust you with more money to manage that system? So anyways, I made some comments, and Jessica, you said to David over here, you wanted him to share on our city website why there are certain grants for historically marginalized groups and why that's not discrimination. David responded that the federal government and state government versus Webster's dictionary, two totally different things. It's a clear misinterpretation. Apparently, he has a concept that the government can change words in a dictionary and you guys get to have your own meaning, meanings for words. He put out a whole press release on it and talked about inclusivity and mentioned the 14th Amendment, which is the equal protections clause. I don't know if you're uneducated about it or not, but the 14th Amendment ensures that we are equal under the law, not unequal. The topic is this, this sentence on a website talking about a grant on the North Bend website. It says, "Preference will be given to minority-owned businesses." Why are you giving preference to one class over another? Are you guys racist? Are you uneducated? Do you not understand the word discrimination? If you guys want to be leaders in this community and be trusted with public money and public operations, you guys have to prove to the public that you can understand simple concepts like discrimination, or they won't trust you. And if you do understand those concepts but remain silent, then you're not being a leader. Because when people are being discriminated, it's a time to stand up and say, that's not right. I don't know if this is a unpopular phrase anymore, but I heard in February every year during Black History Month, that people are supposed to be judged by the content of their character, not the color of their skin. I don't know if he's a good guy to agree with anymore, but I certainly like Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. I know we've got some information here in front of us for the public hearing and the ordinance. So we'll start with item number six, Public Hearing Ordinance 2080. This is the time set for a public hearing of ordinance number 2080, and ordinance adopting the 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan as part of the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use Plan. At this time, I'll open the hearing. I ask the councilors if they have any conflicts of interest or ex parte con text to report. or expertise contacts to report. Hearing and seeing none, will the staff please present the reports?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable members of the City Council. So before you this evening is a proposed ordinance to amend our comprehensive plan. And what we're looking to do here is just remove references to the 1999 Parks and Recreation Master Plan due to that not being a very nimble language within the comprehensive plan. And we would like to kind of future-proof this. So if we, you know, decide this plan isn't working for us in 10 years and change it, we don't have to go back into our comprehensive plan and change it once again. All this is doing is removing references to the 1999 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we are getting rid of the previous contractor, the language of the previous contractor in there. So it'll just be changed to say Parks and Recreation Master Plan as adopted by ordinance. And that is all of this ordinance is doing. And the second part of the, sorry, that is not all the ordinance is doing. The second part of what the ordinance is doing is to adopt the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was presented as Exhibit A in your packet. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and, if that is a report, I will continue on. And we'll now open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to the member of the council and staff. There is a three, there is a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address into the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance 2080? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'll now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for staff? Is it pretty straightforward? All right. Okay. If there's no further discussion, I will close the public hearing at this time. Then that takes us to number seven on the agenda, which is the ordinance number 2080 adopting the 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan as part of the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So I do see we have our attorney online. And this brings us to ordinance 2080. And ordinance, as I had mentioned, adopting the 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan as part of the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use. I will add the staff to give the report. So I don't know if we're going to continue down. And on the ordinance 2080, this would just, we just follow my script here. It says to ask the city planner or the public works director to come up and see if the council has any additional questions. A little bit of a repeat, but we're following the much detailed legal aspect of the ordinance. So we know we said all those things, but you can ask the council one more time if they have any more questions before we go into the ordinance.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable members of City Council. So the ordinance before you this evening, as mentioned previously, is to adopt the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was included as Exhibit A in your packet and to amend language to make our comprehensive plan a little more nimble and not have to keep touching it every time we adopt the new version of effectively the same plan.
Perfect. Thank you. So I will entertain a motion. And this motion is for just to have the first reading be by title only. Is there a motion from the council? I move to the ordinance 2080 to the record by title only. Second, heard a first from Counselor Jones and a second by Counselor Schultz. All in favor of the first reading be by title only? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance number 2080 and ordinance adopting the 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan as part of the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to have the second reading be by title only. I move down the second reading by title only. I heard a first from Counselor Jones, a second, sorry, first from Counselor Schultz and a second from Counselor Slater. Any discussion? All in favor of the second reading be by title only? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ordinance number 2080 and ordinance adopting the 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan as part of the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2080. Is there a motion for the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2080.
I heard a first from Counselor Hamilton and a second from Counselor Schultz. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? I'll now, so I have a first, a second, no discussion. All in favor of adopting, or are we going to do a roll call?
We're to do a roll call, yeah.
Counselor Jones, how stand you?
I am in support of ordinance 2080.
Counselor Hamilton?
In favor of the ordinance.
Mayor, can you see?
I am two in favor of the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Slater?
For the ordinance.
Counselor for us. Thank you. Okay. Ordinance passes. So we now have a adopted master plan. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Okay. So that takes care of ordinance 2080. Now we move on to number item eight. We have the, on your packet, is there a motion for agenda item eight, which is the authorization to purchase a replacement of RAS pump from the Council?
I'll move to authorize staff to purchase a Verus Solid Headlink Pump for all the equipment for $14,000, $1,092 plus freight cost.
I heard a first from Counselor Hamilton and a second from Counselor Schultz. Is there any further discussion? And again, always appreciate being able to go through these in detail in the work session. So thank you for that. Looks like there's no further questions tonight. So we had a first, we had a second, no discussion. We will go ahead, all in favor to authorize staff to purchase the Verus Solids and the Headlink Pump from O'N Pump and Equipment for $14,801,92 plus freight cost. Please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for number nine on the agenda? That's authorization to contract with Johnson Rock Products for demolition of 1380 Sherman.
I move to authorize staff to enter into a contract with Johnson Rock Products for the demolition of 1380 Sherman Avenue in the amount of $14,264.
I'll second.
Heard a first from Counselor Schultz and a second from Counselor Hamilton. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor to authorize staff to enter into the contract with Johnson Rock Products for demolition of 1380 Sherman Avenue in the amount of $14,624. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10 was if there was any action from executive session. There was none. So we'll move on to number 11, which is our city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city administrator's report is distributed via email to each of you. It's also online. And I'm going to take what limited executive privilege I have and I've earned the balance of my time, whatever that might be, to Stephanie, who's going to provide you all a report, staff's report from our Saturday activities and talk about our invitation to the council forums. This is coming, Stephanie.
Okay. Hi, Madam Mayor and Council. Stephanie Wilson, the Community Development Manager and Main Street Manager. So three years ago, when I started, it was shared that we wanted to move the Christmas tree downtown and create a little bit more additional events than just the tree laying, but still keep that tradition for North Bend and what we've had. So we are super excited. The rain pulled off a little bit just in time for us to have our day-long festival. We had easily over 1,000 people downtown. It was really wonderful. It took so much collaboration between staff and volunteers and sponsors to make the day happen. And I just wanted to come and share some highlights that we had. Being the Visitor Center Director, I get a lot of interaction with visitors from out of town. And we had two families that came over specifically from Eugene for the festival. They also, of course, took in Shorey Girls lights while they were here as well. But when I got to work this morning, I had an email from someone from Garibaldi. And they stated that they come down every year for our holiday festival, for our Christmas on Main event. And they, out of everything in Oregon and up and down the coast, they pick ours to spend their weekend and do their family Christmas tradition. So hearing those stories and knowing that North Bend's really on the map for not only community engagement, but also attracting visitors is a really great, great place to be. And so, like I said, the staff, the volunteers, the attendees, the community that comes together. We feature nonprofits, we have donations. And it's just a wonderful event. And so more details on that is on this administration report. And then on Saturday, you know, we always like to have an opportunity to get the community engaged and come together and have something fun going on. So we have a reveal that we're going to share. We as staff and the city and you as well are always trying to move the city forward. So it's a step forward for the community and for North Bend. And so we'll be announcing that and sharing that at the event on Saturday. So that's from 11:00 to 12:30, right in the parking lot down by the visitor center. And we'll have some entertainment. We have some live music, some dance performances, and just a good opportunity to get together and hear of the news and celebrate North Bend. So you are invited to that, and so is the community.
Great.
Thank you, Stephanie. And for the benefit of the council, it is a reveal because we're actually under a non-disclosure agreement. And so we can't actually tell you what the reveal is. We were sworn to secrecy, but it's to benefit North Bend. And so we encourage you to bring everybody down there. There will be a press release, and there will be a hint out ahead of this, but the press release isn't even coming from us. And so just bring everybody down because it's kind of exciting what's going to happen downtown on Saturday at...
From 11:00 to 12:30?
11:00 to 12:30.
All right. We'll be there.
Yeah.
The big reveal.
Exactly.
Can it be revealed once after?
Oh, everybody will, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, when you're there, and these folks are coming from out of town just for this. And so this is exciting.
I will, I will give a spoiler alert. It's not an Olive Garden.
Madam Mayor, everybody was hoping.
I know. But I actually got messages today saying, is it like an Olive Garden?
This is very, very exciting. And when I tell you how exciting, you'll understand when the reveal is made how huge this is for our little city.
Yeah.
So it's new at the tents.
11:00.
11.
And when you said tents, it's at the visitor center, isn't it?
Yeah, you'll see the tents still up. The tent will still be there.
Yeah, but not right.
Yes, the tent's still out there. 11:00 at visitor's center, Saturday.
The main portion is between 11:00 and 11:30. And then I'll be networking and fun right after. So I would say 11:00 would line up.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much. And that sounds, it concludes our city administrator's report, although I know you put out a full document online and website and all the other places to find the details. Number 12 is the committee reports. And I don't think we have any committees reporting tonight. So we would go to the counselor comments. So I will, we'll start with Counselor Jones. Down with this end.
Hey, I was trying to, I was just thinking about our earlier comment around discrimination and how can you have a preference and not discriminate toward you? And I understand that. And, you know, as everyone can probably tell, I'm a token. I've been a token for every job I've ever had, except for babysitting. So I understand, and I understand that those comments come from a place of fear, a place of fear of loss of opportunity. And there's no easy way to solve the larger problems that we see in the world. And anybody can apply for these RFPs that you put out for businesses, whether you're in a protected classroom. So I encourage people who may see them to do it anyway, even if they don't feel they're in a protected class. And these are hard problems to solve. There's no doubt about it. But we're here to try to generate opportunities for everybody in the spirit of our pledge of allegiance. So it's complex problem, and there's no easy answers. And we follow the law. Ultimately, you know, we're here on Team North Bend. And Team North Bend was built underneath the federal and state constitutions. So we have to follow those laws. So even when those laws appear to fall against something that we don't like, something that we want different, we're obligated on this team to uphold the law at all those levels. And so we have to make the hard decisions despite some of our people not wanting those decisions in that way. So I just want to acknowledge that. I want to acknowledge everyone in the room, staffers here, staff here. These are complex problems. There's no easy solution.
Thank you for sharing that. Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, I was getting to mine. So...
I'm sorry.
You know, every year, I see the Saturday thing come up, right? And so this year was Waffle of Santa. And I was like, that's totally me. And I had a kid running everything. I was excited. And then...
Kid rented?
Oh, yeah. I was bringing a kid and everything because I'm not sure I'm alone. I'm bringing a kid to see Santa. And so then I see the hot chocolate crawl. And then I see the pictures afterwards. Like, that was real cool. That was awesome. And so I was like, you know, we're talking about, yeah, we're doing that. And then the lighting of the tree, oh, yeah, gonna be there. And then the Christmas parade, or the light parade. Like, oh, yeah, totally going into that. And then I find out, oh, yeah, I have a commitment that I've been doing for years, the toy run, the bus jam. So I got yarded with my close friends to go do that as we've been doing for years. So I did that. Of course, we rode motorcycles in the rain, which was really fun, thinking about the hot chocolate and drinking inside. And then my company Christmas party was at night too, so that kind of like a bosh, I'm going to do it stuff. So I was really disappointed I missed out on all the fun. And then after you see the pictures and the light and the vehicles that were dressed up, the log trucks with the Santa slay on it stuff and the people that spent hours on those lights. For, it was like amazing. And it really boomed me away how many people come from all over to go do what was put on by the city for our Christmas celebration. So I, I just thought it was, you know, it brings a lot of people together. And I mean, we had people, uh, there was one couple from work that didn't attend our Christmas party because they have a granddaughter and they were putting her in the lighted Chevelle and taking her on the parade. Like that was what was going down. So, um, thank you downtown, thank you North Bend for putting that on. I know, uh, staff does a lot to put on these exercises that we do that enjoy the city. So I appreciate the city and appreciate everybody. So thank you all.
Right, thank you. So we're going to the Christmas party next year, major event, but I hear you today.
I already need to order and slap, so yeah, I need to order.
Councilor Schultz.
Well, I wanted to start by talking about the Road Cross, that teacher there.
Okay.
So again, I do think that it's interesting about how much car traffic, especially during the end of the day and during the tsunami warning as well, watching people go up the hills and just park. It is interesting to think about the fact that Hill Press is one of our, one of the priciest buildings, schools in our district. And it's also, people used to walk there and ride the bus and now with a lot more people are taking with their kids. So around the neighborhood, I, I appreciate residents who give us praise because it is, but you're certain like forty-five minute chunks of time, you just don't want to go and around Hill Press. And so again, that's something to look at or, or even to discuss and think about. So that's just was an interesting conversation and it is. I apologize to people who live there sometimes who are just like, people are just parking in front of their house. Like make sure that, that you have to get out or stay there for a while. Um, also, I wanted to say, nice job, the ice rink is open. And I feel like this year is one of the first times I saw people being like, when is the ice rink going to open? And it's such a positive versus I feel like when it started, people were like, why are we doing an ice rink? And so I'm having people kind of look forward to it now. And it's been like, like only three years, but now I feel like it's so much more positive than when those people were not as tired. So I appreciate that people are really looking forward to the ice rink. Um, and then I also just want to, uh, I like to believe that if I disagree with people, I don't call them down, we're stupid, but that's just me. And so I'm sad sometimes that we sit here and we get talked to and we can't necessarily respond.
All right, thank you. Councilor Schultz. Mr. Counselor Slater.
Well, happy to be here. Happy to be part of the team that's going on. I gotta say, you know, if you look at what the city's been doing the last few years, especially with the Main Street projects and the multiplicity of projects, we should come off of that. DORA work, uh, probably the highlight of course is the Liberty Theater and the things that have changed a lot out there and created a heritage into the future and a, a great place to perform, you know, between now and then and develops a lot of, gets a lot of adults too going on. And quite a bit more that's, that's happened in the properties of our community and pieces going on. I think we have a very solid community spirit focus coming out of the COVID time where we all got isolated for a while, then it was okay, watch your neighbor, take care of each other. What are the needs there? And I think that gave more of an attitude of what the community ought to be, you know, let me take care of you if I have to do that. Are you okay and where are things at? And I think we exemplify that a lot of ways. I'm most excited this upcoming year and the further economic development issues that we have. Any opportunities as we look at the old annex and some of that? We've got some great plans. It's time to execute the plans and get out of the great potential. That's one of the things that I've endured over the last maybe four decades. We have great potential. You know, and it's nice to have great potential and not only North Bend, but Coos County did that. And that's an area, it's our turn to step up and realize the potential to do that. I think we're admitted to do that and that's a dividend providing such great leadership in that way. The last little piece I, I mentioned, we talked about shipbuilding. As I recall from one of the Whitners books, we actually had ships built for World War Two that were wooden mines swavers. You know, the concept being if they're not metal, the, the mines are going to come after it. So, uh, it, it's, it's still almost a recent history that goes on in that way and part of what we were and what we are to be, I think heritage is wonderful. Like, I think the spirit that you see there is what you pick up and run with. And I think that's where we're at and I'm happy to do my part.
All right, welcome back, Counselor Slater. Thank you, Councilor Torres.
Sorry, I think I'm like going to sneeze. I'm just really excited to be here and this being my first meeting. I really enjoyed all the activities, um, from over the weekend. I really liked how, I have a lot of friends from out of, like, Tokyo, Moon Point Powers. And they were just really excited that they could bring their kids down. It was an all day activity and it was worth their time to travel, like forty-five minutes to get here. And they were just all really impressed with everything and it was all ages and that. So I didn't rent, I didn't rent a hit this time. But, um, it was just really great. And also I'm really excited that basketball season, feel like we're going to do good this year. And I'm really excited to see what, um, the girls team and boys team, um, can do this year.
All right, thank you. Well, I want to first, um, say, um, I'm really happy to be here. This is our first meeting since the election. So thank you to the residents of North Bend for reelecting me as mayor as I begin my, um, third two-year term. And I'm so happy to do it with all of you. And congratulations, Councilor Hamilton and Councilor Torres. I mean, you're going to be an excellent addition to the council. It's so great to have, um, Counselor Slater back with so much, um, historical knowledge of our community and so much to add. Um, and I love your vision for economic development and it's going to be great to have you a part of the team. Counselor Schultz and Jenny, Counselor Jones. You always have so much to add to the conversation and to the discussion. And I want you to know how much I value that. So thank you, really appreciate your insight. Always would say the same thing to our council president if he was here and he's not right now. But Larry, uh, Counselor Darbo, he might be a man of a few words, but I really do value his opinion as well. So I'm really happy to begin the next two years with all of you. A couple of things, I've got a little bit of a list tonight. And I just want to say thank you to the Whitners for being here this evening and celebrating the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of this, um, the Western Shore. And, uh, you know, if you haven't had a chance to corner the Whitner family sometime and learn about the things that they have to offer about our community and the history here, join them on one of the historical walks. Hopefully we'll get to do that again, maybe the July Jubilee or when you offer those. Because I love always hearing your stories. So thank you for being here. I want to make sure that I say thank you to the staff. I know that, uh, you all put such a lot of effort into the event, all the events that were downtown. If you think that, that Waffles with Santa just happened magically at whatever that was at eight AM or nine AM in the morning and that the parade just happened magically at like six thirty at night, there was so much prep work beforehand and after. So, I mean, I'm going to guess that there were people that were working close to twenty hour days there. So, um, I appreciate all of you, me that happened. My favorite comment that I heard from a family, somebody grabbed me and they're like, I feel like I'm in a Hallmark movie right now. And so that was just like, I mean, wow, what a compliment. So I love that. And you know, North Bend has always been known for the July Jubilee. And I hope that we're able to, we have these signature events now, whether it's the candy call with, um, Halloween. Now we have the, all the holiday activities and the tree lighting parade. Um, and it can be part of these, um, just, you know, a variety of activities that we have in North Bend. So hopefully we can keep that same energy going, um, as we begin next July Jubilee celebration that'll be here before you know it. So let's see. And really, um, I guess the last thing that I want to add is just, I hope everybody has a happy holiday season because looking at the calendar, this would be our last meeting, isn't it, for December? We won't meet again until 2025. That sounds like a sci-fi movie to me, I don't know about you guys. But, um, if I don't see everybody, I just want to say happy holidays and I wish you a wonderful time with your family and a happy new year. A lot, you know, we've had our city administrator here just, what, just, just about four years, a little over four years. My four year, uh, coming up, uh, as mayor and, um, the, the group that we've been working on, some really neat things over the last couple of years. And this is the year that you're going to see a lot of that kind of progression with economic development. So, um, 2025 is going to be amazing. And just wait until the big reveal, um, on Saturday at eleven o'clock, um, out there in front of the, the tents and the visitor center. And that will be kind of like, I didn't, um, it's going to, it's going to kick off. I'm going to eat clean, but it's going to kick off with that and we're going to carry it into 2025. So, um, I think, um, I think I guess, I feel like I'm forgetting something, but.
Yeah, it's called a jerk.
It's called a jerk.
There's no other business.
There's no other business. I'm with you, so I'm looking. Okay, well, with that being said, happy holidays, everybody. Eat in a jerk.